All right. I'm going to call the Town of Acton Planning Board meeting to order on April 22, 2021. 6:06. We don't need an alternate. If you want to review the minutes from March 18 and April 15.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 15 and March 18.
Can I get a second?
No, second.
All in favor? All right. We're going to move on to Old Business Martell Subdivision, a request for extension. 760 Youngs Ridge Road map, 217 lots 028, 029, and 030. Attorney Lakowski is here to help us, and I'm going to turn it over to him, see where the application stands.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed the minutes from earlier Planning Board meetings, and as I'll explain briefly in just a second, they've convinced me that there really is no need for an extension at this point, because I think where we actually are now is, I believe that the preliminary plan was never actually approved, and if that's the case, then the period of time for submitting the final plan has not even started to run yet. And let me just summarize what I looked at here that led me to that conclusion. The minutes I, the first set of minutes I was provided with are from June 11, 2020, and the relevant portion of those minutes states, Martella Estates, Arnie Martell, and the rest of the introduction, members reviewed a preliminary plan application submitted by Martella Estates on the Lake LLC for an 18-lot subdivision. The CEO said that the plan was submitted to North Bar, excuse me, North Star Planning for review, and the board should have some feedback by the next meeting. Dennis Long moved to accept the preliminary plan application for an 18-lot subdivision submitted by Martella Estates on the Lake LLC. Leslie Berlin seconded, motion passed 5-0. So that was June 11. Then, the next time, next thing we have is from the July 2 hearing, and under Old Business, we have the Martella Estates again, and this time, the minutes reflect Brad Jones said that the checklist from Ben Smith at North Star Planning has been reviewed and responded to, and that the plans have been updated to reflect those changes. So the first thing that tells me is there's been a change in the plan since June 11. Okay. So it's not the same plan anymore. Minutes go on, Dennis Long moved to approve the Martella Estates preliminary plan for an 18-lot subdivision as presented to the planning board on June 26, 2020 as complete. Leslie Berlin seconded, motion passed 5-0. The next line is, a public hearing is scheduled for July 23, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. So I think what happened there is, I think what, I mean, I don't put words in Dennis' mouth, but I think what he was saying here, because he says, move to approve the Martella Estates preliminary plan as complete. So I think really what we were talking about at that point is accepting the plan as a completed preliminary plan. That seems to be supported by the fact that the next line says, now we're going to have a public hearing. You would not normally approve the plan before the public hearing. You would have a public hearing to determine whether or not you were going to approve the plan. So I think what we really had the second time around is, we know from the minutes, the plan was submitted, it was changed, it was submitted again. So I think what you did, what you actually did at that July 2, July 2 hearing, is accept the revised preliminary plan. You scheduled a public hearing for July 23. That public hearing was then continued or postponed at the request of, let me find it here. Under the public hearing heading, we said, it states, the chair announced that Jillia has requested to postpone the public hearing from Martella Estates, and the board has granted their wish. She stated that a new public hearing will be announced. Under Old Business, it says, due to the meeting being canceled, this item was, under Martella Estates, I'm sorry, this item was not discussed. So that's where it ended. Thanks to COVID and everything else, the public hearing never got rescheduled. So I think that's where you are at this point. You've got a, you've, you've got a preliminary plan that's been accepted but not approved. So no time limits have run. I think the next thing that's in order is for you simply to, to go ahead and reschedule the public hearing on the preliminary plan, as your schedule permits. And I think that's really all you have to do. I don't think there's anything you need to vote on tonight, because there's no need to vote, to consider the extension, because the extension was only necessary if the preliminary plan had been approved and we were running up against the six-month deadline. It hasn't been, so the clock's not ticking yet. Any, any questions?
Are you sure you follow?
I think so.
I'll agree with Joe, and those words, as I've said previously, not just because of this, and that is what I meant, Joe, you know, to accept it. The words that we use as a planning board is very, very important, depending on which side you are, is what word you use, is who takes it, however you meant it. But that is what I meant. We, we didn't, I didn't look at it as approving the plan. It was really a slip in terminology, because there's four processes there, whatever we have to follow, we have to accept, approve, and then we may have a public hearing, and then we have to approve the final plan. And so I agree with what Joe's saying there, 100%, where I was the one doing the talking.
So it sounds like my job here is done.
Well, I can argue the other way if you want.
No, that's okay. I, I thought, I think you did just fine.
It's dead simple. I don't want to really make you wait yourself up.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Joe.
Good seeing you, Joe.
So with that being said, should we try to reschedule public hearing, or?
It's waiting on the lawyers.
Well, I, I think in the process, and Gavin can do better with this than me, probably. I don't, usually we have the public hearing normally between approving the preliminary plan, and then we have the public hearing, and we get input, and if there's concerns that come up that we agree with or need to be in there, we tell them they need to change their final plan, and then when they do all that, and then we approve the final plan. Normally, we do have a public hearing after we approve the preliminary plan. Isn't that right, Gavin?
Yeah, yeah. There's usually a hearing between the preliminary and the final.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I really think we have to, according to our process, that we have to follow, that we have to have Mr. Martell come back in and with the updated plan, and we have to approve it, and then we can schedule a public hearing.
Do we have to approve the plan again? Do we have to take it out of terms?
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have to approve, approve the acceptance of the plan again?
If you, yeah, we, we approve the preliminary plan first, the preliminary, and...
Would that be within the 90-day window of when we have to prove, or is proof?
No, because, once we do it, yes.
We will.
Then you'll be in the 90-day window. But accepting it, and I remember we had quite a conversation back then, Gavin, about the terminology we're using with Ben Smith and different ones and...
Approve versus accept.
Yeah, and because we've done it kind of both ways in the past.
But Andrew, the plan, you accept it.
Right.
You're like, oh, thanks for the plan.
Right.
But then if you say it's complete, then that's when you approve it.
Right.
And we have to keep that straight.
Yeah, we have to keep that straight, and it's hard sometimes, and, but I agree with Joe's interpretation, because it was my intent, is what Joe said, even though I really used the wrong word.
Well, I, just, Mr. Chair, for my clarification, I, I think it's a two-step deal, right? We, we accept it and say it's complete, so they, they've included everything that, you know, that has to be included in the plan, and then separate from that is when we approve the preliminary plan.
But, but they might, they might not have everything there, John.
Right, so then we wouldn't say it's complete.
The preliminary plan would be complete, but there's still changes that can be made after you approve the preliminary plan.
Right, but I think what you did at that meeting, from what I read in a response to Ben from the engineering company, is the board voted that the application is complete. So I think that means you accept it, and now you go to review to see if there's things that, you know, need to change or be modified or whatever, but they, we've gone through the process and checked, okay, they hit this requirement, this requirement, that requirement.
But you have to accept it and then approve it. It's two different, two different things.
We're, that's exactly what was, I'm saying.
So the verbiage you say there is what we did.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with it. I think now we have to do just as you said. I think now we have to look at the updated plan.
Well, what Joe was saying was, we didn't approve it.
Right, we haven't. All we've done is accepted it and said it's complete.
But you're saying there that we did.
That he fulfilled the requirements of the preliminary plan.
I, I guess I don't understand.
We didn't, we didn't totally approve it. We didn't approve the preliminary plan, but we said it was complete. We voted that it was complete, like, you know, check, checkbox and stuff.
So our next, next step is to approve the preliminary plan?
Or to do the public hearing, I mean, we...
I'd rather do it after we accept the preliminary plan, Gavin.
Oh, yeah, I think we should get the, get the plan in front of everybody on the board.
Yeah.
Review it. I, I think there's a good chance we should do a site walk, just so people know what they're looking at.
Oh, yeah, with all the new people, yeah.
You know, give everybody a couple weeks to look at the papers.
Yeah.
And then at the next, potentially at the next meeting, after the site walk, we would schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
As I, as I see it, but...
I'm fine with that.
It will, it would be interesting to see if he has made any changes in the past year to the, to the plan itself, too, because there were some things we were still looking for him to add to it, there were just small things, but...
And whether, whether that was all done, I, I don't remember.
Whether he got the state okay.
I don't know any of that.
Yeah, well, that was one of the big things, was the DEP approval.
I mean, we don't have any paperwork, so...
Correct. So, yeah, hopefully we'll have that paperwork in hand, and then we can start, start the process.
We can probably do that at the next meeting, right?
Yeah, May, uh, May 6 meeting?
The Land Use Office has the new paperwork, or?
That'll be May 6.
I assume they must have something, if it's on the agenda, something must have came in.
Yep.
Yeah. Do it May 6?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right, May 6.
I like to keep the ball rolling on stuff.
All right, well, we'll keep it rolling.
Well, let's roll.
All right, May 6.
How do we get the, the file to review? The updated application?
Uh, it, it, it should be submitted from Mr. Martell, and we could just get copies. That's, normally when they submit something, there's like, what, eight copies or 10 copies or, or something that they submit for everything.
They would go through Michael, right?
Yeah.
To throw you under the bus back there, because you're hiding, but you would have to give us copies of all the stuff that's been submitted.
Typically, it would be the land use secretary, yeah.
Yeah.
I can provide a little of the copies.
I'm going back to before we had a deputy or a secretary. It was all those on-the-code guy.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't have any for what he is, did we, Jim? It just, it just can't.
Okay.
So I'm all for that.
So we'll put him on for May 6.
So he's going to come before us one more time?
More than that.
At least one more time.
More than, probably more than one, but be, May 6 would be the first time we, all of us would be seeing him, except for Dennis and Gavin.
First step of restarting.
All set. We'll move on to the York County Agricultural Association, Route 109 and 13th Street, map 241, lot 003, site plan review. Mr. Stanley's not able to make it tonight, but we can review about the site walk that we had with members, and we can get a list of questions together for him when he comes back in. I think May 6 is the date for him.
That's fine with me. There is one thing I would like to say about that site walk.
Other than it was cold?
Other than, it wasn't. I don't, I was late, so I wasn't, didn't stay there that long. Well, I did stay there for a while, but, uh, where we don't have a executive secretary.
Right.
And this is new for a lot of people. The selectmen last year said that these sidewalks have to be filmed, because we have to have minutes of these sidewalks, attendance and stuff like that by law, and I don't think that the fairgrounds is going to take us to task for it, but I would like to make sure that in the future, Mr. Chairman, that you make sure that APAT, through Jennifer, obviously, knows about this, so we do have documentation of it, because that is legally what we have to do.
Any other questions that we could come up for the fairgrounds?
We did talk about, I talked about the monitoring wells for a second with Joe, and he said they put at least two of them in, so maybe that's something that needs to be added to the, at least in the notes of the plan, if they're not denoted on the map.
Okay. Do you think we need a public hearing on that, since there was already one in September of 2019, or no?
Well, myself personally, I don't think we need one. There wasn't that much concern about what they were doing down there from the public and the people on 13th Street. I mean, they worked everything out, and everybody seemed to be happy, so, I mean, we can have one, but I don't, I don't know what anybody else thinks.
I think we're technically supposed to have one, because it was a conditional use permit application last time we looked at it, last year, and now it's a site plan review. But I think that what we have done for the public in the past is probably adequate, but it is a different application now, site plan review. That's the only thing.
Like I said, it, it's completely up to you guys. I really don't care. Our ordinance says, as far as public hearings, that we may have a public hearing. It's not a requirement. There you go. Thank you, Jim. Little big words are hard for me. Nice to see you listening to me, though, Jim. Speed it up. I mean, it's completely, I don't care one way or the other, I'm just...
Yeah, I think it's cut and dry there.
There's not much debate.
Yeah, it's a parking lot, essentially.
Well, I still think it should be two permits, one for the mineral extraction and one for the parking lot. I've stated that since the beginning. We just haven't gained much traction or actually voted on it as a board. And I also asked Joe for the total number of yards that were going to be taken out of the site, because that would be, I mean, it's, it's a fair number, and that is indicative of mineral extraction.
I thought we got that last time, but I'm not sure, Gavin.
No, we got it for the, I think it was a couple streets down.
That other one.
11th Street or something. We were looking at them both at about the same time, and they gave us the...
Right, you're right.
Tremendous number for that one. So you could at least add that to the...
Questions?
List for Joe.
Yeah, what was it again? Sorry.
How many yards of material are being removed from the site?
I mean, that's a pretty easy number to get.
Yeah, I mean, they calculate that pretty readily. They probably already have it somewhere, it's just I didn't see it in the application, and he didn't, I don't think it's in there, but...
So just the monitoring, monitoring the wells and how many yards removed from the site? That's it, right?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I should...
Well, really, we shouldn't. This is my opinion. We shouldn't be talking too much about an application without the applicant present. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't think it'd be considered good business.
Okay, well, we can move forward.
Yeah.
Then. Next up would be Greg Martinez, Iron Tail's 559 Route 109, map 148, lot 001, conditional use, application update. Probably table it until the owner's ready with his sound study for tonight. We did receive a letter of public comment before it got misplaced with the whole shift of the land use thing, that I'll, it's a letter that I can read out.
What's with this second letter? Was that mailed to us?
No.
I'm, I'm having trouble...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
I didn't see it.
Second letter.
I'm sure it's my mistake. It was another letter that wasn't signed or something?
The unsigned letter.
I, did everyone else get that?
Yeah. Jen has a, Jen Rue has a comment.
One of the planning board members came in and reviewed the entire file, and she found the letter within the file, and she asked if he sent the entire planning board. It wasn't dated August 20th morning.
Yes.
It was just in the file, Jim.
Yes.
The town floor selectman never saw it. Apparently somehow it must have went downstairs, mailed, and somehow it moved to the file. That was the first time everybody's seen it. She pulled it out of the file and asked for you all to get it.
I just couldn't find it in my attachments on my, my email. I'm sure it's me, though, I'm having...
Welcome down, help you out, Jim. I'll bring Molly down, we'll help you out.
Yeah.
So this letter came in on March 25, 2021, at 9:28 a.m. It was from Leslie Berlin.
Berlin.
Yeah, Berlin. "I'm writing in reference to Greg Martinez, Iron Tail Saloon, conditional use permit. I am on vacation, so I cannot attend the meeting. I am asking the following, be read at the public hearing, thank you. My name is Leslie Berlin. I am a long-term property owner of, and resident of Acton. I've served approximately six years on the planning board. I am also employee at Iron Tail Saloon. I have extensive experience in the food industry service for 25 years plus as a bartender, server, and service manager. Greg runs a tight ship at the saloon. He is highly responsive to any suggestions and feedback, whether brought to him by staff, patrons, or neighbors. He immediately takes the appropriate measures as warranted. Last summer, there was an individual who complained about the noise. Greg addressed this with the band and also spent a great deal of time taking decibel readings around the property to ensure he was in compliance with the town ordinance decibel levels at the property line. It is my understanding he is taking additional noise migrating measures for the summer. Greg and Iron Tail Saloon are an asset to the town of Acton. A number of Acton residents are employed at the saloon. Number, numerous benefits are held at the saloon throughout the summer. In fact, $20,000 was raised last summer for vouchers for veterans. Greg is an upstanding citizen of this community, and I support him 100%. Iron Tail Saloon is one of the few businesses here in Acton, and such, and as such, the town should support its continued success. I urge the planning board to approve the updated conditional use permit for Iron Tail Saloon." That's it. So it came in, it was in, but it was found after the fact, so we should read it, because it has to be read. Is there any new business for tonight?
I just wondering why Greg didn't come tonight?
Greg, uh...
Where it was on the agenda, that was all.
His sound study wasn't ready, so, I guess that's why...
That's what he was waiting for.
Yeah.
He's doing, he's having it done?
Yes, I believe so, he says to, so...
What's he building down there, do you know? I see some poles, there's got to be...
I don't know if that's for a fence or not.
It's gonna be that fence, wooden fence he's putting up.
It's gotta be 12 feet tall, though, right? That's not what he was talking about, was he?
Originally, it was 12, but he dropped it to 8.
It was 12 and 6.
I don't know if it's back or not.
One size, but one side was 6 feet or something like that, too.
But I know it's a wooden fence.
Right. So that's it for tonight?
I believe that permit goes back to last summer.
Does it?
Yeah, I think so. That's not part of the, that's a whole different.
So what are we going to table this until he gets his...
Sound study. That's it?
So how does that work?
Sound study?
No, I mean, and I've got no, whatever, one way or the other, but he's coming to us for a conditional use permit to do something, and because he's in violation, but he can't cure the violation until he does the same thing again to know if it's cured or not.
Right.
I just don't understand how all this works, I guess.
Like, what, next month are you talking or something?
Uh, I wasn't, not sure.
No timeline on it?
But, I mean, I, I think we should put a timeline on it.
I guess that's my point for liability purposes and complaints, and because the planning board, it could be said, not by me, of course, that the planning board's not doing their job, they're allowing something to go on that's in violation of the ordinance.
I think we have to put a timeline on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I mean, I got nothing against him doing, I understand it, but we're the ones that are putting our necks out there, I guess.
Right. It's our responsibility.
That's what I'm saying, Jim. Because my, but the opinion of right or wrong is irrelevant at this point, because we don't have all our information, but we do our due diligence and be responsible.
Right.
So I think myself... So I think myself, um, if in fact he's doing those sound meters tonight, there's no reason why we can't have this information that we asked for on the 6th.
On the 6th, okay.
I mean, what do you guys think? We gotta move forward with this.
Right, because he's, he said he.
Do you have any idea what, how it was?
No, the last conversation I had, he was gonna do it and then, and that was after the public hearing, I believe. And he was gonna do it and then he, this was, he hasn't got it done yet, obviously. Jen?
He sent the full planning board a letter on April 17th and that's where he references where it stands and where he's at and so forth. So that's the last the town of Acton has heard from him, but he spelled it all out in that April 17th email that hopefully you all received.
Can you put a timeline in there? I don't remember that.
It says, I have nothing more for your permit.
I don't think so.
We'll have an update that I can email you by the 22nd. I appreciate the effort, it was all by the April 29th.
I read that email, but he didn't address.
And I think we need to. We're the ones that are putting our necks out there.
Do you want to have him come in on the 6th then?
I think you need to tell him he needs to and he has to have the information by then.
Right.
Otherwise, I mean, to me, if he doesn't, otherwise he's gonna have to shut it down until it gets approved. That's just harsh realities.
Right. So we'll have him come in on the 6th and.
Not that I agree with it, but it's reality, you know?
I don't know, that might be too soon. I think we could give him more time than that, honestly.
To get this, he's doing the sound things tonight, Gavin.
He's doing it tonight?
Yeah, that's what they said, that's why he's not here, he's doing the sound things. What'd you say?
He wasn't ready with the sound study yet.
Well.
So he's not doing the sound thing tonight.
Right, he has to schedule with the engineer, so we don't know when he's scheduled with the engineer.
Get some sort of speaker, I'd assume, to try it.
And then, right, he's gotta get his sound system set up and put music in and get a bunch of people driving around.
I mean, I just.
Put about 40 more people on the lake on the boat, so that helps out the sound too.
I don't know, I just, maybe the 6th is a little too soon to.
What do you suggest, Gavin?
I, I think he's, wants to get it done and he'll, he'll bring it before us when he accomplishes it, honestly, but.
But now you're talking, if we don't do it on the 6th, that means it's what, the 20th, right?
That's his own choice, I mean, that's.
No, no, it isn't his own choice.
But if he opens up before then and has events and then things go awry, when's he, when's he?
Well, we can put him on the agenda for the 6th and if he's not ready, I don't think we should worry about it, we'll just have him at the next meeting.
I don't know.
We can put it on there.
We got a lot of people paying very close attention to what this board's doing and myself personally, the restrictions that, and this has nothing to do with this, the restrictions that are put on certain people in town, they have to abide by those restrictions. And if you wanna do something different, you have to go through the proper process and you can't do it until the process is done. And I think we're giving him an opportunity to, we're trying very hard to work with him, but sometimes you just gotta, this is it. Because we, we're supposed to be representing the people in these ordinances.
What's coming before us, the test with the?
Sound.
Sound. And is there gonna be some kind of a plan with that wall whatsoever?
Well, I would assume so if he, if the sound comes over it, but.
Is that an engineer, by the engineers, is that part of their?
Yeah, he stated in the first meeting that he was gonna have the, the wall and then some sort of like 45-degree thing, but then in the second meeting, he said he wasn't gonna do any of that.
He's gonna do an 8-foot wall.
Right, he's gonna drop that, take off that 45. So right then and there, it's, he's, I hate to say it, he's kinda flip-flopping his ideas.
And also, we had asked for him to consider some, maybe a row of.
Arborettes or something.
Arborettes or planting some trees is a way with that damper. So he was gonna ask that of the sound engineer as well, if that would be helpful to mitigate the noise.
At the least, he's gotta come to our next meeting and give us some information showing that we're moving forward.
Well, let's bring him, let's, we'll just bring him in on the 6th and see what he's got as an offer and we can keep rolling it on and.
Give us a timeline as the engineers and work.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I kind of agree with Dennis, I don't think we wanna let it roll on and roll on.
Right, the worst case is if he has nothing on the 6th, he come, we'll bring him back in on the 20th and then kinda tell him.
Either it's done by them or.
Hate to be like, you know, Dennis saying like being the bearer of bad news or the bad guy, but sometimes you gotta play bad cop, good cop.
But like I said, everybody else has to go through the consequences of whatever these books say. And when you start making exceptions, that's when you start having problems.
Well, I'm not sure he's gonna put on a whole-scale event, you know, before he gets approved and this kind of.
Well, he, he has to because.
I'm not sure that's how the sound engineer is gonna calculate.
No, he could probably.
Well, he has to have the sound.
Like a.
I mean, he could put a CD in, turn on the speakers, get some noise, go to the property line. I don't know exactly what the sound engineer is gonna do, but I wouldn't think he would have to have a full-scale event.
Well, when he was here, Gavin, he said that, can I still have my outdoor music?
Right, and he said we weren't, that we weren't gonna stop him or.
Or whatever, you know, so he's planning on having his outdoor music.
Concern, Dennis, is continuing the activity before we approve it.
Yeah, and, and which I understand why he has to, but there has to be a time limit on it, you know, there just has to be. And it really honestly, and I don't mean any disrespect to Mr. Martinez, but the timeframe that it takes him to, um, get this information isn't really our problem.
No.
Unless he comes forward and says, you know, the engineer he had just got in a car accident and he's in the hospital and he can't come for two weeks to, or whatever, I mean, that's totally understandable, but, um, everybody's busy, everybody has to move forward, uh, whatever they're doing and, and it's really on him.
It's the information you'd expect from anybody.
Right.
Just to move the process forward, you know, we can't, you know, we can't be left in the dark. We need some kind of information, you know, to.
I mean, honestly, Kenny brought this to his attention last August. You know?
All right, well, we'll put him on the May 6th agenda and.
And hopefully you'll have what we need.
Yeah, and if not, maybe we'll.
Bounce him to the 20th and.
Instead a, a limit at that time.
Yeah.
At least we'll know on the 6th that he's here, what's going on.
Yeah.
Right. And like I said, there's no criticism on my part of Mr. Martinez and his operation, it's just.
You just can't let it roll on, we're, we're not doing our job if it just keeps going.
No, no matter who it is.
People have deadlines on their jobs and we're people too.
You deal with it every day, Chris.
Yeah, so it's gotta get done.
Is there, is there no ability to, to get our hands on some sort of sound meter that's, you know, dominie, dominie? And I think he said he was gonna start on the 29th, so to be proactive, we, the board, and I don't know, we could go do it, could go to the residential areas that were.
Affected?
Yeah, affected by the noise and, and take some readings there, independent of what his sound engineer says, so we have, you know, another data point.
Right, the town could buy it, wouldn't it, John?
I have one ordered, I, I need one for animal control, for dogs, and so I've ordered one, hasn't come in yet, so when I get that, we can use that, you know, someone can use it.
Is that imminent, Jim?
What's that?
Is it soon?
Yeah, it should be.
Probably Amazon hasn't done it.
Should be.
I think Amazon has chopped it lately.
Oh, okay, because I think he said he starts the 29th.
Of April, John.
Of April, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Just come in on the 6th and give us some information, just to.
Yeah.
He's opening the 29th, he said, of April?
Yeah, that's what John said.
That's my recollection from the meeting. And maybe that email, that letter.
I mean, he just, this has to be a good faith effort and I'm not questioning his effort, but it has to be shown to the people that are very interested in what's going on with their, that, um, we're working on it.
It affects a lot of people.
Yeah.
In a lot of ways.
That's all I'm saying.
Ways, not a lot of ways, but just ways, so. Motion to adjourn?
Motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Oh, that dies for lack of a second.
All in favor? All right, we're done.